At this time, I will call the Franklin Township Board of Trustees business meeting to order on March 7th at 12:00 PM. I would remind everybody to silence your cell phones and please keep all comments to yourself as this is a business meeting for the township. Mr. Chief Byron Smith, will you open us in prayer?
Absolutely.
Father God, we thank you for this day of life. Lord, we just ask that you preside over this meeting. Help everyone with the things that are on their mind, troubles. Give everyone a clear heart, clear understanding. And if you would, Lord, just bring a calmness to the setting. We thank you, we praise you, we give you our love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Chairman, we need to just pledge our walk.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Here. Here. Present. Yeah, we're gonna go to, um, let's go to public comments and questions. First up, we have Mr. Mullins. Remember, you get three minutes to speak. We won't interrupt if there's any further discussion after that. That's not on the time issue. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, one thing I'd like to know what Jim found out about Franklin County.
County engineers, county engineers have told me that our right of way is what.
Please don't. Thank you, go ahead.
Well, that and they're starting to steal and it ain't even summer yet. They're coming up out of the Christian Drive-In or wherever you want to call it, that place that Queen owns. And they're coming up and walking, going right up on the decks and stealing stuff already. So I just wondered maybe if you could get the police to drive, you know, maybe once or twice at night, take them here up and down Ray Avenue or.
All right, does he have anything else? Go ahead, Jim.
County engineers have told me that what they've sent to us on our right of way is our right of way. So that sixty foot, thirty foot off center line is where our right of way ends.
Well, so how did we find out from the city? Because they keep saying that that part's in the township. That's what the city.
I haven't heard anything back from the city. The only contact that I've got, it had to go through the chains. I really don't know who to go to with the city, so I just contacted the contact that I have. And I'm poking the ear back from them, but Mr. Mullins, I really don't have anything other to say other than the county told us this is what we've got.
That's what we have to do with the county.
I understand that, but I, you know, can't get out of the city. They keep saying three foot and then they say the rest belongs to the township.
So my suggestion might be, Mr. Mullins, is if you can go down to the county and get a copy of their map, which they will produce to you, and then just go to the city and say, listen, this is the county map. How are you saying that this is XYZ? I want to see your map because all's, it seems, and I'm just thinking of you as my father. All you're getting is the lip service back and forth over the phone. The city's like, oh, no, etc. But if you have something tangible in your hand from Franklin County and you take that over to the city and say, this is XYZ, maybe you'll get a better answer.
Or, or contact a landowner and ask them if they would clean it up. I mean, it's their property and. And is there anything, I mean, I know Carol's talked about this too, but of those homeless living back there, they're, they're the ones that's coming up.
Okay, this is a whole nother question.
I'm just saying, it's go to that property that Queen owns. What, what's he gonna call it?
Hi, so Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I did see an email on this.
Yeah.
Chief, did you guys walk that property and for homeless? And I mean, I was reading different emails back and forth and responding and it was great that we had those emails and being alert. And I welcome those because if it wasn't for the residents in that area, one thing, it wouldn't be clean. Mr. Queen himself was here and was not happy with me when I explained to him as a board member that he was not a good steward of his own property. How is it that you want to do X with it and you can't even maintain your own property? If it wasn't for the good people and residents of the township, it wouldn't have been as clean as it is. But, um, sir, did you?
Yeah, the day before yesterday, I was over there, we walked it, I talked to Carol. It looks like the camp is gonna be kind of in a swampy area. There's a car back there, um, which is probably in about three to four feet of water. So there's no way to get a tow truck back to it until, I guess, is maybe June when it dries out. Most of that area back there is, is the property of the city of Columbus, or at least their jurisdiction. But we're, we're still gonna try to do what we can to do our part.
Okay.
So the problem is it's buried in there and we're gonna have to come in from probably behind Central Point.
Is our officers aware, have you made them aware that, you know, like for instance, the thieves that go on, the petty stuff that is going on? You know, it's getting summer, people like to put their chairs and stuff out. They don't want to go on Marketplace and buy it back.
No, I agree. No, the officers are aware of everything, just like I'll send out something about the propane things today. Problem is, you know, like I told Carol, you know, I passed three homeless camps that get to that one. It's such a problem in the city. We're doing the best we can with what we have, but.
You say that's part of the, you say part of that's the city?
Yes.
Can we contact the city attorney and have him do his little cleanup? And they usually go through and just mow all the bushes and everything down.
Yeah, that and between them and the railroad is, is what happened last time about five years ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll try to reach out to the city and see if we can't get their, their assistance and use some of their resources.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have to Jan Lee.
It's the same thing I say every time, just thank you to everybody. Y'all be safe out there and thank you again.
Moving on to women, I've got one more. And I forgot to put in, would you, you want me to ask the question regards to the trash dumping late at night?
You can, but it didn't have time, the hours that they were becoming.
Okay, so if I can just address the board on her behalf. What we're seeing with Finland Avenue is local waste is coming in. And sir, if we can find out, is, is there a noise ordinance go to the school as well as far as them coming in at two and three and four in the morning and emptying those trash cans and setting them down and going boom?
Where, John?
Okay. Finland Elementary Schools. So they hit each one of those. The contractor, which I believe is local waste for them, does not recognize the Franklin Township noise ordinance because they are affiliated, from what I understand, with the school. They feel that they do not have to abide by the noise ordinance. Yes, so we would need to probably find out from our attorney. Does the southwestern city schools have privy over the not abiding by the noise ordinance and bringing trash trucks in to empty their trash at two, three, four in the morning? So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I just said that I would speak on that because voice is a little low for her today.
Yep, moving on to new business, Mr. Jeff Wolfcheck. Looks like you have some audit adjustment reports for us. I always love these things. It's so much fun. You have the floor, sir. Oh, you got us handouts?
Yes.
They're on here, but, okay.
Well, I think you got one of three on there. So, a few weeks ago, working out with the Auditor of State's office, the representatives, we finally agreed to a number for the end of December, or December of 2019. And, wait a minute, I gave you the wrong one first. My bad.
I'm not going crazy. I may be going crazy, but.
There.
Sure. That number that we agreed to is a million, three twenty-five, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars as far as all the sudden balances go at December 31st, 2019. And when I say we agreed, they had their information, I had information from 2020 going forward as to all the transactions they cleared the bank in 2020 relating to 2019. So we compared our notes and we agreed to the million, three twenty-five. Which, that's a good start. We're getting closer to moving forward and being done with this, okay? The first page, the first three pages, just a summary by individual fund of all the changes that have taken place for 17, 18, 19, okay? And if you turn to page four, you'll start to see what the adjustments were that Audit found. A lot of them relate to credit card transactions and the way that they were being handled back then. That has changed and we've got handle of, a good handle on the credit card transactions that were being recorded correctly. Back then, wasn't happening. There's also a handful of receipt transactions that they picked up on. They actually found and cleaned up some that I wasn't able to. And that has to do with how they were able to get information from UAN that I wasn't able to.
I have a more statement just to the people that are hearing. The credit card transactions, it wasn't as if there was any wrongdoing other than just merely being misplac, uh, calculated or we have a policy now in place how they are to be used so that they are calculated correctly. Is that correct?
I don't know. But back then, it was the way they were posting the transactions.
I meant to say posting, yes.
Okay. So they opened up a purchase order, they posted the transaction when they got the receipt.
Correct.
Problem is, all of these transactions show up on the statement for the credit cards.
Okay.
And should never get posted until you have the statement in hand to match them up.
Okay.
So you're having transactions posted that didn't match up with the credit card statement. There were transactions on the credit card statement that never showed up in the records either, that were not posted. So a combination of two things.
Okay.
Okay? Like I said, that's been cleaned up and taken care of and moving forward, it's done correctly now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. I did not total up the net adjustments for all three years. But there are in the vicinity of $400,000 worth of adjustments. Now, keep in mind, these adjustments are just final ones from Audit. I received from the Auditor of State's Local Government Services section a spreadsheet with a thousand rows of transactions that weren't questioned.
Okay.
And there's a lot of adjustments that were taken into account leading up to this.
So out of, so out of that thousand, we were able to clean up and marry it together and we were good with that?
I'm not sure how to best answer your question, John.
I don't, I don't think I can be answered at this time.
There were a lot of transactions that I got cleaned up. There were a lot of small ones that I didn't bother with.
Okay.
It reaches a point where you gotta look at things from how much does it cost to do this versus the benefit. So I cleaned up the large ones. We got it down to a point where a small dollar amount, it's still a fairly large amount though, okay?
Okay.
But it reaches a point where you're investing a lot of time to find little transactions and try and clean them up. Be done with it, post an adjustment against General Fund and move forward.
So when it costs, when you're trying to find a penny and it costs you a hundred dollars to find it?
Exactly.
Got you.
Okay? So, all of the adjustments that Audit has presented and things that are moving forward still create problems with the reconciliations moving into 20, 21, 22, 23.
Okay.
Which require more cleanup. The second word that I gave you is moving forward into 20, 21, and 22. Now, keep in mind that I was able to get things reconciled in 22 and 23 completely. Still working with 20 and 21, trying to find all the transactions that were a problem with, it's still a problem, okay? I'm down to a point with 20 that I have a five, $5,000 difference between what I can reconcile and what the bank says. So that's pretty good at this point. But still moving forward, those audit adjustments plus things cleaned, being cleaned up in 20 and 21 still affect everything as the balances roll forward. So it's gonna take me a little more time to get that wrapped up. I'm truly hoping to have it wrapped up by the end of the month. Okay, now, I'm tired of going backwards and looking at this stuff. But we've got transactions that come back into play that have to be addressed. And I can tell you that in 20, and I think that will give you a good example of it. If you turn to page four, you'll start to see a list of all the receipts and the expenditure transactions that have not been properly recorded or recorded at all. And there's quite a few of them.
So for a lot of people that are hearing this, how are we doing for 23 and 24 compared to the issues we had prior to you coming here?
23 and 24 is fully reconciled.
Okay.
And that's where a lot of things that we cleaned up in late 21, you start to see the benefit of it in 22 and 23.
That's what I'm getting at. So basically, our eating habits have really cleaned up that we are doing this correctly.
Yes. You could say you're now using your plate and your floor flatware correctly instead of being off the table with nothing else.
Some analogies.
And again, I did, I started here June of 20 and I was working on the prior stuff from 17, 18, 19.
Sure.
Working with Mary, I knew what she was working on and cleaning up a number of things. What I didn't know is the problems that she was having and the other problems that still existed in there. And late 21 is when I began to pick up on that in the 22 and started addressing things and trying to get these things cleaned up. Because I was finding problems looking at the bank statements versus what was posted to the financials records.
With us having policies and procedures now, I think that a lot of that, we have a, a, a good guideline of how this should operate correctly so that we don't fall between the cracks.
I'll go along with that, yes.
We are starting to implement more and more policy changes.
There are more things that Audit had brought to your attention that had, that go beyond what I thought.
What we did, what we did the last meeting is just a, just a tip of the iceberg and the change is coming around here. So buckle up, folks.
So the one thing that, and again, 22 and 23 fully reconciled. Every month, I reconcile the bank to the books.
Okay.
Transactions, if any, that are missing or didn't get recorded correctly are all posted and taken care of. But done timely now.
So you don't have to go back and do twelve months is what you went through.
Now, on occasions, there are a few things that pop up. We're wrestling with what's happening with the credit card machine. We seem to have some transactions that aren't marrying up the way they should and we're trying to nail that down and figure out what's happening here so we can get it scraped out.
Okay.
I'll, I'll know by the time I get done with February reconciliation as to what's happening with those things.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Thank you.
We do have a few other items that carry along on the reconciliation that are slowly getting cleaned up.
Okay.
Okay? But again, we find them immediately and we address it. Where before reconciliations were not being noticed, we never knew what was happening.
You're gonna go back seven years and figure it out, that's tough.
Exactly. So right now, where I stand with working on 2020, I gotta go through 21 yet. I'm down to a difference of what number I have to hit in 22 of $42,800 that I've got to figure out yet. And eventually, it's gonna get down to a point where we're just gonna adjust the plug number against General Fund and be done. Because it's, it's not worth the cost.
Sure.
Especially considering we had 22 and 23 pre- cleaned up.
Yeah.
Now, they, also, keep in mind, this affects the financial reports that we've got filed with the Auditor of State's office. They need to be updated. So that's part of what takes place here.
Okay.
We're getting there. Almost there. On this. Okay. You're done? Yes. With your whole report? Yes. Okay, so I do have a question then. So part of, I've set the audience all those years. Yes. And part of your deal here was to do these things. Your also was, part of, it was to train fiscal officers, is that correct? Correct. And so, I want to know where we stand on training the new fiscal officer. Took my question like. It's very difficult to train someone that doesn't show up here to do a job.
So how, you're, you're here how many hours a week?
I'm here about 20 hours a week. I'm here 7:30 to 11, 11:30 sometimes noon, every day.
So do we have any understanding, Mr. Mazer? Do you have any idea how many hours a week or month that she's here?
I don't think it's really Mr. Mazer's job to track.
No, I'm just down there and he knew. I mean, I'm just asking somebody that's here. I mean, I didn't want to bring Robin into it.
Right, that, yeah, you're, you're correct, because then, yeah. Okay, I see your answer, I see your questioning.
I will honestly tell you, I rarely see her.
Okay.
This is disturbing.
Okay, and can't train someone that's not here?
Exactly. And it doesn't pay for me to come running down here in the afternoon when she's here for 45 minutes to train her, that ain't gonna work. Nobody in their right mind's gonna show up and try to do that.
Right.
So.
I still, can I, I'm sorry. I didn't have anything.
So you wanna, eventually, you and I've had a conversation and you want to get out of here. I want to be a consultant. Correct. On audits, either information here or ongoing, but you want to get out of here and turn this day-to-day operations over. Correct. Explain to us where we're gonna be if that happens. Well, there's only so much that Robin can do. And trying, her trying to do everything is not gonna work. There needs to be somebody here that at least has the experience and background I have. They don't have to be a CPA, they just need the experience and background. I meant to have with me today a sample job description of, we'll call a finance manager. And what those duties would involve. Essentially, you would pick up and take care of, or do a lot of what I've done. Now, whether that person works under the fiscal officer or under the trustees, that's your decision. But I will send to you guys a job description for a finance manager, we'll call it. So that you can have an idea of what's going on. Now, whether that person is full-time or part-time is your call. But at minimum, somebody needs to be here probably 25 hours a week.
So in my opinion, as one board member, the amount of time that you've been here, you were recommended by the Auditor of State as someone that you've worked with and we thought was in the best interest of the township. The reason I'm saying this is because the other two board members were not here at that current time. Moving forward to the, to the other board members, I think it's essential that we have yourself or someone come in to make sure that these numbers are matching up on a monthly basis so that you don't have to go back and try to figure something out and get something in mirror and that if there is an issue, like for instance, making the credit card machine match up like it's supposed to, that, that doesn't go on for a year or two and then try to catch it back up again. So I think to the board that we need to, however it works out with the fiscal officer or whatever's going on there, we need to have a private entity such as this come in and be able to establish as a CPA and go over our numbers because essentially what we're doing is protecting the dollars and how they're being used for the township and accountability.
I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have to hire an employee. Because the job that they're gonna do is not gonna be the definition of an independent contractor.
Sure. No, this is, I, I think what Mr. Fishman's speaking.
Overseed, just to over.
Above and beyond hiring someone.
Yes, they need to be involved in some of the day-to-day activities.
Right, right. So someone like yourself, long story short, I would love to keep, bring you in, even at some point when you turn it over. I'd still like to bring you in either quarterly, monthly, or something since you have a good grasp of what's going on. Your back town, background experience, you're with other townships as elected official as well and.
No.
No?
I am the appointed finance officer for the Village of River Park.
Okay.
I have been a former city auditor. I've been a former finance director and assistant finance director. And I have 30 years with the Auditor of State's office in their, four with the audit division and 26 with the consulting division where I helped train the local governments, local government officials, and we cleaned up a lot of messes.
So the, the problem being is, I don't know how to say this.
Not at all.
No, we're, we're on this and I don't know if we're supposed to be in an executive meeting and mention this, but I don't even know if a fiscal officer lives in the township.
I heard rumors up to that effect too and questioning, but what it, what it really comes down to is somebody needs to be here that understands how to do this stuff. When you look at the criteria to, for an elected fiscal officer, it's two things. They live in the township and they're a registered voter.
Right.
There is absolutely no accounting background or anything required. And this is not a glorified, we'll keep you positioned.
And then to, to the audience, when we appointed her to finish out Mary, uh, Mary Reinhardt's position. Yeah, I apologize, thank you, sir.
We've been through Margarita.
Margarita. So I apologize.
We have to have, we got, I got a squishy in my crib, anyway, I don't remember.
When we interviewed and we, the board needed to appoint someone, one of the reasons that we appointed who we appointed was based on her background working with, I believe it was a trucking company and doing their finances. She had payroll experience and things of that nature. We were trying to pick the best quality person that we could because you have to sign up to say, yes, you want to do the job. And we only had two candidates, three candidates? And out of the candidates, we picked the best that had, as you're saying, at least an idea how to turn on a calculator and, and be able to work. So we thought it would work out fine.
My understanding is you wish you would be here at 9:30 every day.
I, I, unfortunately, as a board, we're here to see over the finances and etc., etc. We have, um, we do not see that on a day-to-day basis.
And we, and she's, she's an elected, sorry.
Elected official.
She's an elected official too.
Right.
She can set her own hours also, unfortunately.
The board does not control her department per se. We are over, when we pass resolutions, the board sees and signs every check, etc. But we cannot be telling her when she has to be here and not be here. She doesn't have to be at every meeting. I think it's one every quarter, she's required to be at township meeting. So I, I, I'm just saying things so that the people in the audience, I'm kinda stunned what I'm hearing anyways about the timeframe. But I'll just shut up with that.
Yeah, we, we probably need to discuss other things and at another time.
Before you go, I have one more thing to say. You were really, you were ready to walk away from that podium and no one had any questions and I brought it to your attention. And now it's quite concerning to me that we seem to have all these questions. They had the ample, he had ample opportunity to ask you these questions about what's going on. Because your duty and they hired you to train the fiscal officer. I was sitting back there when it happened. I wasn't sitting here. This is the first time you've ever came, you and I, speaking in a public forum. And so we need to hold what you've been hired to do and you was hired to do these reports and you were hired to train the fiscal officer. Why you have not been asked these questions before this baffles me. Well, working with Mary, we were getting some things done, okay? Nick took over for Mary and we had it down pat to where I was down to maybe 15 hours a week. Nick understood how to do a number of things and was quite capable of doing it, and he was doing it. And I think he was probably doing about 20 hours a week, which worked perfect. Robin was getting things done, Nick was getting things done. I filled in on a few things and working very smooth, very well. Now, unfortunately, Nick left. So Marguerite came in, she was here for two months, really didn't get much of a chance to really learn a whole lot, okay? But she tried, at least she was here too. Then comes Lindsay, again. I've only seen her on a few occasions. So I got, okay? So, um, not to throw a nail in the coffin, I did a little checking on some things. Lindsay has not signed into the accounting system since about December 15th, 20th. Lindsay has not signed into the accounting system since about December fifteenth, twentieth.
So she has no clue, she has no clue that of where we are as financials in any way of form, shape, shape or form.
Other than what she sees when she comes in here on paper.
When was the last time she signed in?
December fifteenth, twentieth. December fifteenth.
It's almost three months.
She's been asked to bring in the laptop that she has to get the updated software on, if that has not happened.
Is there anything else, sir, that this board needs to be addressed about, not to, we gotta take the person away from the situation and not feel that we're hurting feelings or we're tattling, tattletelling? We need to know as a board, stuff like this, is there anything else that we're not aware of?
Best I can do, that I can tell you at this point.
Okay.
You keep in mind, I'm still reconciling monthly, I deal with the patch reports or review them with Robin, okay? I deal with all of the budgetary side of things.
I understand.
Okay, and I keep that in, in check, as far as the appropriations, making sure they're all posted correctly, make sure that the appropriations are within the estimated resources, in other words, maximum that you can do, making certain that, that side looks good, the information's filed with the county budget commission, that needs to be filed with the county budget.
Sure.
Okay?
Had this, had you not been doing this, we'd be right back where we were, where things were late, not getting filed, and we would be in a mess again.
Yes.
Who do you report to?
Pardon?
Who do you report to? Do you report to Lindsay, or do you report to Steve, or do you report to the board?
I report to both Lindsay and the board.
Okay, so.
I think it's important that we get updates, we have any communication.
Especially like this, for three months, I thank you for telling us about that, I had no clue. Sometimes I hear bits and pieces that may be what is considered rumor, and I don't get involved in it. But I was not aware that, call it absentee, because as an elected official for the public, there are certain things that she has to do that Robin cannot do, because she's the assistant. The fiscal officer has to the UAN and different functions, and she has to be the person that signs off on X, Y, and Z. And it's very disturbing to think since December fifteenth, I think it was, you said, the twentieth.
Fifteenth, twentieth.
Is the only time that you've checked, that's like saying this last time you checked your bank statements for your personal self, and you're out, wanting to shop.
If it is a password problem, she has never requested a reset on password. I know she knows to do that, because there's evidence in the accounting system that she needed to do it a couple of times, November, December last year.
Now.
There's a transaction log that can be generated out of the accounting system that shows who's done what.
So, could you, what about working, I apologize, working abroad, is say she's hooked up to her own internet or goes to.
You'll have to talk to your IT people to see how that gets registered and tracked.
But it's still, for she's signing into.
If she signed into the accounting system, it would show.
It would still log it no matter where she's at.
Okay.
Could you please print that report or send electronically to each of us?
I could send it electronically, but you will have to do a search on her name to find the information, okay?
Yeah, please do that, I'd like to see that.
And thank you, I know that's not a pleasant feeling, and I.
I don't mean to put you on the side by, but we need to get this information, because we need to.
I can't see, I can tell you something that's not true.
I appreciate that, and thank you.
No, not saying that you would, but we need, we need it when we have, have a conversation, because, as, as I've said many, many times sitting here at this table, that it's, it's, it's their money, not my money. It's their money, and we need to be, we're held accountable for how it's meant and how it's done, so we need to make sure that.
It looks bad on the board, because the voters are gonna come to the board and say, how could you not know? Because you saw us perk up pretty quick, going, excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that.
You guys have an obligation to take corrective action.
Right.
To ensure this, but.
Right, because.
Over the last seven years, what's going on, doesn't happen again.
At the end of this meeting, we need to make some phone calls to find out what the next step.
The problem has existed beyond seventeen, it goes back as far as twenty thirteen, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the state's not looking at that yet.
No, they will not go backwards on it.
Oh, they won't?
That's generally a policy that they will not go back into periodic periods unless they find wrongdoing.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mazer, can I ask you to please set up a executive meeting next week with us and Lindsay?
Do we also have legal counsel for, you know, what we're doing, do we have an, do we have an absentee, what questions we can, I think that Julie, we should have legal there that knows the ins and outs of fulfilling your job and your duties.
I'm fine with you leaving her in there, if she has time, I'm fine, if not, we can.
Or even on the phone.
Yeah.
Just to counsel the board.
Could you just do that and let us know when you, when you get it scheduled down? Now, I don't know what your schedule is. Yeah, if you can make it like nine AM, that would be perfect. All right.
I wasn't ready for that one.
We're good, but I thank you.
Do we also have an engagement letter, I think, for him too, in this one, don't we?
I don't know. Mr. and Mrs. Patty Spencer from Southwest Area Commission, what do you have for us today?
Oh, I got a whole bunch of stuff.
Awesome, I love hearing that.
Happy March, everybody. Steve. Again, I'm sorry.
You're fine, no, 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 no.
I still feel such, I had a horrendous February.
I understand.
My son had surgery, and it, between his doctor's appointments and my doctor's appointments, I was not available to help out, and I do feel that.
No, 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 I, I, it worked out, you got something more important to take care of, we got through it.
Family comes first.
I didn't bring the township down, you know, crashing down, so it was good.
I got, I got paid for neither, so, you know, it all worked out. Okay, first off, and I'll give you all this paperwork that you can share with everybody if you want. I got this off of news break yesterday. Apparently, they are rescheduling the hearing for the bus terminal. I didn't know if you know about it.
Yep.
But I saw it and thought I'd print it out and bring it.
Sixty days?
Sixty days?
Yep.
Each side has the opportunity, and they're just gonna make it out. Continuance.
The second thing I have is there's free tax help for individuals or families that make under seventy thousand dollars. And it's under www-sixonefourfilefree.org. So if you know of anybody that needs it, hasn't filed yet, that's available. Also, and I don't know if the police and fire, no, I'm sure they do, the Knox Box information. Did you know about that? Okay. That is, it allows them to have access to houses and buildings in an emergency. So if you had a member or somebody, it's like a, what, a key, key access.
It's a universal.
To be able to get to them quicker than, whatever. But anyway, I, it was posted in one of my emails from the city, so I thought I'd share that. The city is also starting career opportunities for summer, so I have information on that. Paid summer work experiences for youth and adults, I've got information for that, if anybody, especially for, if you know kids that are in school, that are getting out for the summer, that would like to have some experience. AEP is launching a new bill assistance tool for anybody that's still with AEP, that hasn't gone with a third party, so I've got that information for everybody. The homeowner's assistant program, I have the clinic information all over the city that anybody can go to and talk about why their tax, land taxes got jumping so high. And then also the Board of Revision input person filing events all over the city that you can go to, so, it's all the stuff I have, and thank you, Ben.
We, we thank you, appreciate it.
I will give that to you, and you can copy and disseminate however you want.
Okay, um, we, we do have, moving on to the next, we do have a new community liaison officer. Deputy Atkins from the Sheriff's Department.
Afternoon, you guys, and my name is Dan Atkins, I'm just, I wanna introduce myself. I oversee the sheriff's office, I cover which is considered Zone Three, so Franklin Prairie, Jackson, Pleasant Townships. I'm here not to take over anybody's job, I'm just here to help Chief, help you guys work out anything and everything, be it something small. I'll get with you guys about some of the issues you've had going on there, so anything, all my cards here, I'll be around after the meeting. Feel free, have any way I can assist anybody with anything, that's what I'm here for.
Have they started the citizens academies up again yet?
They are, I believe, having another class in the fall, and as soon as I get those dates, I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, because we'd like to, there's some citizens here, I know that would like to take.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Chief Smith, step on up to the podium, sir. The floor is now yours.
Before I give the stats. I'll leave you.
Sort of.
Just a couple out of boys for the, some of the second shift guys. Good for the police, some of it is still ongoing. One, February twenty-first, Sergeant Pollock assisted SIU with a traffic stop. And after that, a search was conducted, and as a result of that, over eleven thousand dollars was impounded cash out of the vehicle. Now, this led to a few other traffic stops. On February twenty-eighth, Sergeant Pollock and Officer Tim Myers also assisted SIU with another traffic stop. This led to, I'm trying to pick out the stuff, I don't know what to tell you. Some other information, which resulted in the picture you have before you, of a traffic stop made last night in the area of Broad and Georgesville, where a hundred and fourteen grams of methamphetamine, fifteen grams of cocaine, thirty-five grams of fentanyl, and two ounces of marijuana was recovered and impounded, and then investigation is ongoing. So just a quick shout-out to our second shift.
Could, could we start getting those updates, emails, or texts to us?
Sure.
On these, I mean, we get the DOAs, I would, this is something that might make the news that we need to be abreast of before.
Yeah, yeah, even, a lot of times, it's very limited information.
Right, as long as we know.
And this one happened last night.
That particular one was last night.
And you had another, I heard rumors of another big, are you, are you?
That one is still ongoing, but that's, yeah. That's the one, the, the previous two traffic stops all kind of led up to this, also a good one.
I do have a follow-up question when you're done, though.
Go ahead, sir.
With, with things that have happened in, in other jurisdictions, do we have a policy in place and a check system of evidence taken into custody?
Be more specific.
Do, do, like you or the lieutenant double, like go in and periodically check the evidence room?
No, we, we have a very strict.
Inventory.
Yes, you have Lieutenant Rappel, and then you have Sergeant Moore, and then you have the officers that initially impound everything. So you have like a three-tiered check, and then everything, once it's disposed of, has to go by court order.
And that is turned over to county or?
Well, it depends on what it is, I mean, in the past, we've been able to retain property like guns and things like that. By court order, it comes into the department as, as firearms that's in by the township. Drugs, things like that that are disposed of are done, everything is done by court order.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yeah, well, kinda, but can you, can you type up, or if you do already have it, so we have it on hand and on record, of our procedures, because not, I, I'm not saying one of our guys would, but there's, there's always new questions out there, you know, what happened with Steve. Another department here locally, with evidence being taken from the evidence room, that way we, we can say, no, we've got this under check.
Right, that's the way we have that three-tiered system.
Don't we also have a video camera too? At one time, didn't we have a camera for the, anything that we had the evidence room?
There's no cameras in the evidence room, so.
Okay.
There, there was talk when the ones prior to, I think, these, or the one up in the middle, but for whatever reason, it's not inside of it.
As, 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 as the chief, and being, being your department, you're solely responsible, would you think a camera in there would help? Or?
In, possibly, I mean, we have a very strict chain of custody.
I, I realize that, but would it, would it be another layer for you of, of being able to build security?
It would, we would just have to figure out a confidential method, like it couldn't be a camera that's posted on like street wall, because it's inside the evidence room. So you can't televise that.
Correct.
Which is, why do we have to really figure out a way that? Because it would, the whole thing would have to be kept a hundred percent recorded confidentially.
Let's look into that, I just think it might be something to help protect our guys and you.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So January stats, I have more, so I'll be, try to be a little bit brief. I don't know if these were given, so we'll do it again. January this year, there were five hundred and eighty calls for service, seventy-six incident reports taken, and sixty-two traffic stops. February of this year, we went down to five hundred and seventy-four calls for service, eighty-three incident reports, and fifty-seven traffic stops. Questions on those? I'm good. The speed trailer that we have, well, we'll give an update on the new ones, so the new ones, we have the PO, so that is being ordered today, and we'll find out how long that's gonna take you to get in and run it, we can work on that. The mobile trailer we currently have is on Big Run East. For the last fourteen days, we have towed seven thousand twenty-six vehicles, two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven violators, which is anything one hundred and thirty miles per hour, so if you're hitting twenty-seven, twenty-eight, once you hit thirty, you become a violator. Average speed is thirty-three miles per hour, which is not normally excessive, excessive, but because of the twists and turns, we try to monitor that, because we have had a lot of nasty accidents in that area in the past.
Speaking of, don't mean to interrupt you, but speaking of speed cameras and trailers, we might wanna get with Jim, Jim might be able to help you get the info, but I know on Hague Avenue, the county had theirs up.
Okay.
I don't know if it, you know, has the same data that you're looking for, but I do know it was up, and maybe it could be some more.
Yeah, extra data for us right there.
Yeah.
Because I know we still have the stationary camera up around Shipper Wall. It's on a pole. There, there's some tree branches in the way now, so the hardest thing with these things is finding a good location where you get a really good line of sight.
That's why the trailer will be much better.
Yeah, so once we have those, do that, we'll be very beneficial. So next on the agenda, I believe, we have the MailChimp, the monthly newsletter, they have raised their prices, so we're asking for an amendment, amending resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two six to twenty twenty-four dash zero two six. It has increased from, I believe, thirty-five to forty-five dollars a monthly.
Can you tell me what that does, Chief?
Yeah, it's an electronic. Yeah, it's an electronic newsletter that we send out with stats, uh, any pertinent information, anything that we want the public to know. Um, the last time I heard, we had about two thousand subscribers. I don't have a really, uh, easy way of knowing how many of those are, are, are not in the township.
Do you know the last time that we had a letter go out?
It went out last month.
Last month. I used to get them, but I don't get them anymore.
Really?
Yeah, I don't either.
That's where you're supposed to subscribe, I'll make sure.
Yeah.
I'll have Ratliff look into that.
I know.
He's the one that sends it out.
While we're on this subject, I'm curious about the, uh, Community Connect page, do you have any information on that whatsoever?
No, it's not our page, so.
Okay.
I haven't even looked at it, to be honest with you.
I do have a resolution if you want to. Yeah, go ahead and read that resolution and. Well said, Chief, you good? Chief?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, this is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two six, it's a resolution amending, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two six approving the Police Department Monthly Online Newsletter Membership Increase and be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves and authorizes the Police Lieutenant to resume the online month police newsletter using an online host and a membership fee not to exceed forty-five dollars per month. It is a reoccurring credit card charge. If the monthly membership fee should increase, then Lieutenant is to notify the Board of Trustees immediately. I'm gonna make a motion to. Let's do the resolution as it's written, make a motion to accept it as it's written, while, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Yep. You're pulling triple duty today.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call? Roll call, please. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you know you were gonna have to do double duty today?
Yeah, about five minutes before the meeting.
Anything else, force?
Yes, sir.
He has some more on there.
Yeah, I have more. Um, so back when Ari Alex was a trustee, he signed up or facilitated the, a grant through the Ohio Auditoria State's Office, the opioid, uh, grant. So last year, we were awarded three hundred dollars, and Steve and I had a discussion on what to do with that money, and we decided that buying medical kits for the cruisers would be a good idea. So, long story short, today I was provided by fiscal, um, some information on the grant, I still believe that our current use for those medical kits, does fall in line with the very vague guidelines of the opioid grant, um, because part of, part of the grant is us trying to prevent illicit or llicit opioids and also support recovery. By doing that, we respond, uh, to overdoses on a daily basis, and some of these can be very trauma. You know, they can contain a lot of trauma, so these medical kits can help the officers in mitigating these injuries until EMS gets there. Okay, so.
I, I can get there, I can see that.
Well, I mean, as.
I mean, I've been on runs with you guys, I, I, yeah, I can see the use of that kit.
I mean, I can, I can, I believe I can make that, that argument, so we have sent it over to Julie to get an opinion from her before we move forward with asking for the supplemental appropriation of the opioid money, which I was under the impression had done back in twenty twenty-three, but apparently it's not.
Okay, so we're waiting on, we're waiting on to do, to do the appropriation till after we hear back from Julie?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And if it's determined that these medical kits cannot be used from the, uh, from that grant, then what I will do is work with Jeff Wilcheck and, uh.
Work with our fiscal officer.
The whole.
Yeah.
Whole team, um, to find unencumbered funds that we can use.
Okay. We, I'm sure we'll figure something out.
Yes, oh, I believe so too.
Yeah, it's a good cause, I mean, I, yeah. Before you leave grants.
Yes, sir.
That's why it's important that all grants go through the fiscal department. I know I sat in on meetings where there was an issue, where there was grants kept over at the police department, and I just think it's important to go ahead, I think it's important that all grants run through the fiscal department.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
I mean, you're, you looked at me like you didn't know that there was an incident where.
No, I'm, I'm very well aware.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was not a typical grant, Mike, it was a grant that we didn't necessarily apply for, but have to apply for. We were simply awarded, uh, those traffic monies for, you know, traffic enforcement, so.
But when things go wrong years later.
Right.
They don't have all that information yet, what they have is that fiscal has made a mistake. And so that's why I think it's important that all grants run through fiscal.
No, I agree with you.
Okay.
Then we're on the same page.
Anything else, force?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is the redactive software for. I was gonna pass it on, I was gonna pass it on down, but. So, the redactive software we have for the body cameras, um, expired, the licensing expired. It was not a very user-friendly software, so we got with Motorola, which is where we have our body cameras. They now have their own proprietary software. They were not able to pull this together for us before we got the quote for the body cameras. Um, I have a quote which is broken down yearly, and also for the five years that we have the contract for the body cameras. So what I wanna do is simply present this to the board for examination, and perhaps, uh, next meeting, we can discuss, you know, is there ARP money that could be used for this that we also, you know, that's the way we did the body cameras, or do we need to look at other options? So that's mainly just for you to.
You should have a line item in your budget for this annual payout, right?
No, sir, because the body cameras were originally funded through the general fund, and then the ones that we have now are now through ARP, so the entire contract has been paid from ARP money, so there's nothing in our budget.
So this is something, Mr. Chairman, I think that we need to nail down, um, a funding source going forward, whatever we do, um, if it's gonna be coming from the general fund on a yearly basis, or if we are gonna set aside a line item for the future.
I, I, I think, yeah, I, I, I think we need to get it on board, but also I think we, we definitely need to do that, and I, I believe being police, I think it should come out of that, that fund, but we can look at it.
Is there room in your budget for this?
It was not budgeted for, for this year, but I can certainly meet with fiscal and we can look at the budget and see if we can't find.
But going forward, we could put a line item in your budget for like twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm talking about, is, let's make sure to get some of this stuff cleaned back up to like, taking it off the general funds because they're gonna be getting hit with other charges now.
No, I understand, I understand, yeah, so the body cameras are completely said and done.
Okay.
Um, the only thing we would have to deal with would be the redactive software, and again, this is just to provide you guys with the information, um, and then next meeting, yeah, I'm asking, we can have a conversation.
I'm sorry?
He's not asking.
Yeah, I know, I know, we're not asking to move, I know you're not asking to move on, but this, this, this dollar amount, grand total here, that would be for the five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess that would answer my, I should ask that question first?
Yeah.
It's a little over two thousand a year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the, the way it's worked out, I think on the last page, you have that initial, initial setup of like six thousand and something, and after that, it's like ninety-five, nine, nine hundred forty-five dollars a year, something like that.
Do you have expected these, uh, the new cameras, how, how many years?
Um, with the contract we have, at least three, within three years of our, our contract we have, every camera we have will be upgraded free of charge.
Right.
Um, to the newest camera, and then those will be under warranty for another two years to the end of the, the five years.
So that would take us two to five, that's what I was trying to.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
Thank you, I, I remember, I thought it was, yeah, I couldn't remember the year, I knew there was somewhere and there was gonna get new cameras.
Like midway through, they just, they're gonna upgrade every camera.
I just remember everybody saying how technology, it was Bob that told us how technology keeps changing it and all that, I just wanna make sure.
There are, that's probably how they.
If we go with the five, that, I'm gonna have the same.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, obviously.
Well, they do that so they can keep charging.
Absolutely, everybody does it, right?
Yeah.
Can't buy a light bulb that goes ten years.
So are you done presenting?
Yes, sir.
I wanna ask you one quick question, I have one, go ahead, you know, go ahead, go ahead. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, Lieutenant Ratliff and Steve and myself, and during that meeting, came up about payroll, and we implemented a new payroll system.
Yes.
Kid, correct? And so you're in the throes of learning this. I think it's very important that the lieutenant learns how to do the payroll at the same time you learn to do the payroll, because during that meeting, he said he did not know how to do payroll, but he was open to learning.
Yes.
So, I know it seems like we have one person do it, and I believe there's times where you came in on times off to make sure payroll gets done and everything, it wouldn't hurt, like when you're doing payroll. If Dave overlooked your work, you understand what I'm trying to say, like you did payroll, Dave overlooked it, before it comes over here, where it becomes a problem when it becomes over here, if there's mistakes.
No, we're already implementing that, starting with the first time.
Great, I just wanted to just double check that, that's all I wanna do.
Well, that way, if I was on vacation, not.
Absolutely, yeah, you should be able to go on vacation freely and not have to come back in to do payroll.
Right.
And that's why we made the move for payroll to give it more days.
Yes.
Okay. Couple of questions for you, one, we talked about the Postal Service Union, did you make it down there to talk to, on the call, where the car had drove through the gates?
Yes, that was all clear, the report was taken.
Not, did you, did you meet?
I did not meet them, the officer went back, met with them, and took his report.
Also, there was a meeting last Friday at Havenwood?
Yes.
With CPD and, and I believe Sheriff's Department, was you informed of that?
No, it wasn't, that was actually Thursday.
Okay, Thursday. Have you found out what that was about?
Well.
Or should we talk about this at a later date?
I know what they say it's about, they, they are trying to promote their services, um, I do believe there is gonna be some ongoing, uh, strategic help involving the city and county as far as drugs and, and crime and stuff like that. Uh, so they are gonna meet every month, so we have the next meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Which is in April.
And the M child that was found, um, in our jurisdiction, have you checked into why we wasn't even notified? Until after the fact?
Yes, um, Chief Gilbert was notified by someone at CPD that they were doing a grid search. He was, he, he was not aware it was actually in the township.
I just wondered, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't dropping things.
No, he sent it out to his guys, one would think dispatch would have, uh, picked up on the fact that it was in the township and sent it to our guys. I don't think they did not, so.
Okay, out of your control.
Yes, there you go.
Cause I was asked about that, and now, now I have an answer I can go back with. Fair enough. John, you have anything?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Um, I apologize, Mr. Stevens, you had asked me if you could've gone first, did you have something?
That's fine, go ahead.
Go ahead. Do I go? No, please.
You sure?
Yeah, please, no, go ahead.
No, after my. I, I do apologize, Jim, I, it totally slipped my mind as I looked over at you.
What happens when you get old?
Yeah.
True, I keep hearing that.
Yeah.
I'm glad I'll never get there. Um, I actually did not have anything on the agenda, but as everybody knows, it doesn't always work out that way. Some things pop up after the agenda's been put out. This is an estimate that we were given, and this is just an FYI for everybody to see, this is just an estimate that was given to us for our paving project for this year. Oh, yeah. I think you did the right one. As you can see, um, doing quite a few roads this year, and this all has a lot to do with our road district that we've got put into play. Um, we have to do so much with, with the monies that are brought in every year in order to still continue to get that. So, we kinda rolled some things over from last year to make it, you know, feasible to do quite a bit this year. I did get with, actually I got with Jeff earlier because there was a question I had, but we have rolled over from last year into this year to see exactly where we're at. I knew what we had in our budget right now that I can pull up on UAM, but I do, there were some in the, in the, makes sense in the back, I guess.
In the rear.
In the rear. So I got with them and found out that, you know, with the total price, if you look on the third page at the very bottom, we actually have enough to do that, uh, and pave all of these roads, which, which would be great. And for the audience to know the roads we're talking about, um, because I gotta fill out, yes, see, the whole Broadlon addition will be completely repaved, Broadlon will be done, um, let's take care of that page. Ray Avenue, Ray Avenue's gonna be done from one end to the other. We were going to do a little offshoot alley that per se hunt that goes back that way, the county looked into that. We're gonna have to bypass that alley, we'll just stay on top of that with our grindings and everything for this point, because it's actually too far gone for them just to come in and do a metal fill, we're gonna come in and do another whole re-build. Brown Road, which is actually Old Brown Road, which is south of Frank, there's a section on Brown Road that is actually township. We don't maintain it, we don't plow it, that's all pretty much done by the city and county as they're going down through there. But it's a joint venture between the city and the county, that whole road's gonna get done. Well, we didn't jump in and do our part, we have one section of old paving in there that we would have to come back in, so the county contacted me, asked me if it was something that we would be interested in doing, I said, please put it on our estimate, and then we'll just see what we've got, and see what we've got to work with. But that pretty much, uh, that pretty much summed that up.
Jim, south of where on Brown?
I'm sorry?
Where on Brown, I'm sorry.
South of Frank.
Which part?
South of Frank.
Because south of Frank, but it's funny how. You drive down that road, you'll see, you're in the town, you're, you're, you're in the limits, you're out of limits, you're in the limits, you're out of limits, you're in the limits, you're out of limits. We've got like a section here, then a section there, then a second there, so.
Jackson Township also has.
Be completely done, and then I do know down at Dyer and Old Brown, they're gonna complete a redo, and that's kind of been a very bad intersection, although that's the absence and, and I think the city right here, that end. But that's just us being, I guess, a good neighbor and doing our part on it too. But only thing I wanted to do is just get it in front of you, next meeting in two weeks, we'll be able to have, um, a supplemental to be able to pull the monies that's in the rear's into play, um, I think about doing it in a resolution. I think today about, I think the only thing I'm gonna need would be a motion to go ahead and kinda move forward with the county, let them know where we're at, what we're doing.
I, I'll make a motion that you go ahead and contact the county and let them know where we're at, what we're gonna do, and preparations will be coming.
Yeah, and like I said, in two weeks, we'll be able to go ahead and have the resolution and everything.
I think we can cover that with, uh, that motion. I would ask for, if there's any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve, whenever you get a chance, we'll take a roll call.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Anything else?
I have, go ahead.
When will they start, Jim, just out of curiosity?
This would be probably going towards the fall, but usually, right now, they, they just got all their bids in, you know, and what they're doing now is a just rearrangement schedule, usually Mr. Mullenax will send me to see where we're just now going into March. By the end of April, I will, I should have a complete schedule, and then that's when they start working it from the summer and into the fall.
And then lastly, I'm gonna ask everybody, do you and Ryan both do payroll?
Oh, yeah.
In your department?
Yeah.
And, and you're, and just for everybody to know, the township has taken your payroll system, and we have implemented it over into the police department, and I just wanna give you credit because it's your system, you worked with it over these years. It, it came through to be, you know, great, I assume you both were able to do it, but.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask everybody across the board.
No, that's.
Just because I think it's very important to that.
Yeah, Brian, you know, I've taken Ryan in here, I mean, Ryan's actually learning a lot because he has to, cause when, if something happens to me, I can't.
And that's my whole point.
Brian's learning. Brian's learning UAM. He's learning everything to be able to get on and read it and, and do the whole PO system. He's been doing payroll for a couple of years now.
Great.
Doesn't like it.
Sure.
But.
No one does.
No, I don't either.
That's why he makes all the fun.
Yeah. But, uh, and then with that being said, I'm, I'm more than happy to help them out anywhere I can.
Yeah, and I knew that too.
It's like a discipline play.
Sure. Just so you know, when he has to fill in in the meetings, when you, when you have medical emergencies and things.
Ryan?
Ryan, when he had to come in here, he's done a fantastic job with us.
He was friends, too.
Chief Arnold, you're, you're good to go if you needed to.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman? Had four things to lock out today. Sorry, Steve. They all have their motions or resolutions. I would ask for a motion to approve Eric Pierce's injury time. Uh, he's been working off his sick time bag because it's in DWC. We're not allowed to approve an injury time. It's supposed to be some days. We've met all the criteria. It's up to you guys to approve his injury time, so we can switch it over to DWC injury time versus.
Mr. Major?
He got this sick bag. If you don't recall, he was injured on the fire back on January twenty.
Yeah.
Goes back to the doctor, March twenty second. We're hoping he's coming back to work.
All, all the, all the forms, everything?
All statutory requirements.
Thank you.
For his, uh.
For Eric Pierce, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept his injury leave. Is there any question? Hearing none. I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
When you're ready, give us a, um, roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my second motion is just approving the resignation of firefighter John Brown. He found a job back closer to home that he couldn't turn down.
I think we talked about this out here.
So he, he resigned in good standing, effective March third.
You know, I've always. To keep it. I, I know. I was, I was wondering that. I mean, if we don't pass this motion. I'll make a motion that we acknowledge and accept his resignation. What was the date?
March third.
March third. Twenty twenty-four. Um, any questions? Hearing none. I'd ask for a second. I'll second. Roll call when you're ready.
Um, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yep.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And then in lieu of that vacancy, uh, we found a young man who was going to take John Brown's place. Uh, so I asked for a motion to hire firefighter Bryson Partlow at firefighter one level. His first day would be March twenty fifth. Pending his entry physical. It's the first day of a pay. Or it's the first shift of the first.
That would be his first day?
Yeah.
Um.
It would please you all, I would like to swear him in on the fourth, because his family's on vacation, uh, before that.
April fourth. Yes.
Gotcha. And where does he come from?
Uh, he is new. He is, um, working part-time at Madison and part-time at Purry at the moment. Just getting his medicard.
Yeah, a lot of them done that.
He's a solid kid. He's impressive. He's impressive, yes.
Um, a, as we have asked, um, Chief Smith, we, um, we would like to meet these, these officers that we're putting on and firefighters. Is there a way you could bring him in on the twenty-first to meet us before this firing in?
Absolutely.
On the fourth? Okay. That way we can have a chance to meet him and talk to him and.
Sure.
Ask him some questions, but, um, I would make a motion to hire Bryson Partlow, firefighter one, starting, start date would be March twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and I would ask if there's any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, is this a motion or since we're hiring and there's an expenditure, would this not be a resolution, sir?
That's a good question. There is money involved, so I would say it'd be, well, the problem of that is.
There's a resolution to hire someone?
Previously, we've done ro- resolutions to hire.
Right.
When I was under the understanding from your meetings at the.
Yeah.
Conference, that it wasn't necessary to hire someone.
My question would be for the board is, it, it, when, when caution use a resolution? Um, being a motion, I think that you probably could, but.
Well, the problem is.
If we get audited, where is the resolution that we hired, and a resolution is to uphold any expenditures that the board finds being necessary? And there's going to be an employment, there's going to be an expense.
But, but the problem is we have to do an emergency one, because a resolution, I mean, takes effect after thirty days.
Okay.
So we'd have to do an emergency, and I don't know if that meets the criteria.
So.
Of an emergency resolution.
But you're right, we need to do it a resolution, not a motion.
How about if we do a, uh, motion to accept on his, if he accepts that we, we acknowledge, and then we do a resolution when he comes in? See, we can offer a motion, we can take a motion to, to extend, to, um, to offer the job. And then, and if he accepts, then we do a motion, then we do a resolution to accept.
But when he comes in at the next meeting, he wouldn't be able to work until the.
You're saying it takes thirty days for the.
A resolution to take effect.
But the, I, I, uh, hearing that, um, he would still be able to have employment. You don't have to wait till it's in fully effect in order to do that. A- as soon as the board passes, it's set forth.
I don't think so. We'll, we'll, we'll check the legal, but yeah, we'll make a motion to go ahead and put him on and we'll iron it out on our side.
Absolutely.
I will check the MLC, just to move the resolution on.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion to go ahead and bring him on, make sure he passes all of this stuff.
We just want to make sure that.
All of our ducks are in the road here.
Because eventually, if we have the auditor come back and then we made mistakes, prefer to do it right. It's not a, you're doing it right, you're doing it wrong up here. It's just, we're talking legal.
Yeah. It's that, it's that crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
That's a good question, though. I need to find out, does that actually?
It does not.
Do we have to hold something out thirty days?
Thirty days.
I recall something being said about that at the conference, but I didn't know if that means you can't move forward.
Yeah, you can't move forward. You can't move nothing on that until for thirty days. It has to be an emergency. And I can't remember the criteria of emergencies.
Okay.
That's why we got to keep, make sure these guys understand, these department heads, when they need a resolution, be thirty days. It's going to take thirty days from that date of that resolution and. But we have a motion. We had a discussion. Any more discussion? Um, hearing none. I would ask for a second.
I will second.
All right. Mr. Major, whenever you're ready, sir. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yep.
And Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, next up is a resolution for the then and now, uh, PO request to pay Ohio Peterbilt. This is the invoice that we got for engine one ninety-two when it went for brakes and a PM oil change. And the invoice came back, you had to replace a couple of hubs in the front wheels. Came back significantly higher than I assumed. I had enough money in my blanket PO to pay for the initial assessment. When it came back, it was over that PO, so they knew. Perfect call is to bring you guys to then and now, since it's above a three thousand dollar limit, you guys have to put a resolution on it to make sure this bill gets paid.
Sure. I have a question for you. Um, with the brakes, do we see rotors getting warped and et cetera from the heavy excessive need to stop and move and?
Not necessarily. The rotors they put on these trucks are so.
We can't, I'm just curious, because I know nowadays. They, they have the upgraded ones where they have the Swiss cheese holes and allows the heat to just.
We can't get brakes and rotors from the manufacturer.
Gotcha.
The suppliers from which.
Right.
Complicated things and makes the price go.
I, I, I like the, I like the fact that, I like the fact of taking it back to the dealer too, so. That's, that's where all of our vehicles need to be taken back to. And I'm reading this here, the, the, what you'd sent to Robin. I, I, I don't ha- um, is that a resolution, you say?
It is a resolution.
I, I, um, to him. Mr. Major, you want to read the resolution? Or Bob, you want to read the resolution? One of you and.
I have it.
Okay.
It's resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two five. It's a resolution authorizing a fiscal officer to pay or hire Peterbilt for maintenance and repairs to engine one ninety-two as of then and now. Um, whereas after product services were rendered, the township received invoice number W zero six four zero 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 sixty-five zero. With the purchase order with prior certification of availability of appropriate funds to pay the obligation by the fiscal officer do not reflect, uh, enough funds to pay. And whereas section five oh seven, five point four one, paragraph D, section one, revise, of the revised code, provides in certain circumstances, a subdivision may authorize payment on a contract executed without prior certification by the fiscal officer.
Um, I will make, um, as the resolution is written, so moved. And any discussion? Hearing none. I would ask for a second.
James, let me catch up with you here now. I'm trying to do.
Bob's talking, but. Bob sent me something in the.
I will second.
I just need to see it, that's all. I'm sorry.
And then while he's catching up.
Yes.
I was thinking we were talking to many, because the medics, you know, like with normal vehicles, the heaviness and the breaking, do those heat up and warp every time?
I don't believe so. They tend to really get careless.
Sure.
Krieger, and once again, we pay an extraordinary amount for.
Sure. Make sure.
The parts because of part term in four.
Right.
And then extra thirty percent because we're a public entity.
Yeah. So we have a. I second. We have a second. We have a first, we have a mo- a resolution. We've had a discussion. Now, whenever you're ready, do a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And Mr. Fleishman?
Yes. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll use this opportunity. I know these vehicles are expensive. But just to shout out to the crews who take care of these trucks. A fire truck is supposed to be retired after ten years because it has served its useful life and typically breaks down and isn't taken care of well enough to pursue past that. Uh, we are running a fire truck that's fourteen years old, which is the one that just got new hubs because they've been run two hundred thousand miles over fourteen years. And our backup truck that just went out the door, we just fought this big fire in, uh, Brakesdale right here over the weekend. The truck's twenty-four years old and still running and pumping like a journey, so.
And that's testament to your. That's it. Credit to our guys.
Credit to the guys and how they take care of their equipment.
I see, I think I seen your maintenance log over there that, that looks just outstanding.
Yeah, we've been able to keep a really good track of everything with our, it, it started as our EMS reporting software, but it's blossomed since then. It does our payroll, it does vehicle maintenance. It's pretty extraordinary. But other than that, uh, one last resolution to accept a contract with Med Account, which will be our new EMS billing provider, which I feel like I beat to death over the last three weeks. Uh, basically, I just needed a resolution and then a signature from whoever you deem appropriate to sign it, whether it be the chair or Steve or myself.
I think I do believe that has to come from the chair.
That would probably be best.
Okay, yes. Um, Mr. Major, you want to read that? It looks like you have it in your hand.
I will. Um. It's resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven. It's a resolution approving contract between Franklin Township for Med Accounts for EMS billing services to be resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. Approves and authorizes a contract between Franklin Township and Med Accounts for EMS billings regarding the township fire department, effective April one, point eight four. And then there's an exhibit attached for you.
So moved, as the resolution is written. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
Whenever you get a chance, we'll take a roll call.
Where are those tabs located? Uh, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Then lastly, I just wanted recognition of the public to shout out to my crews who put the fire up at Brakesdale. If you've seen any of the pictures from that, it was in the press and clubs from that, which means there's a significant amount of fire inside of that building. Our crews made an aggressive but safe attack to knock that fire out before it spread. Just the talent that we employ here on the end of those other lines is, is significant. And if anybody wants to see the picture, I have it. It's in the press and clubs, but. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Just real quick, payroll. I know absolutely nothing about your payroll, because it's different, right? I mean, you, you have, you don't have to physically be there for payroll to get processed. Like you can take a vacation, not have to come back.
So because of the way the department is laid out, I have done every payroll since we went to ESO in our scheduling system. Because I can do it from the beach or.
Oh, okay.
Home.
Okay.
But Lieutenant Ratliff is fully capable of doing it in my absence.
God forbid you would be hurt or something, but he can do it.
He could.
Thanks, Ray.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jim. Thank you for your time.
I guess it'd be even, Mr. Major?
I have, um, some motions to approve bills and payroll. Uh, motion to approve accounts payroll reports is written, presented on March eighth, twenty twenty-four. At the Redwood meeting of Board of Trustees, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. It's outlined in the attached exhibits from check number seven zero zero one 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 to seven zero zero six one and electronic vouchers three two seven point two zero two four, three four two three two zero two four.
So moved on the motion? Any discussion?
Give me one second.
Yep.
Please. These are second.
I'm asking for a second now. We have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
I was just pausing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready to do roll call. We're working with you today.
Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yeah.
And Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
I have one more. It is, um, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve two payrolls paid on March first, twenty twenty-four, one in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And the second in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. For a combined total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, zero seventy-eight point zero eight. It's outlined in the attached exhibits from electronic vouchers three four four dash two zero two four to four oh six dash two zero two four.
So moved on the motion? Is there any discussion? We will pause so Mr. Major can get caught up. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Blevins?
No.
Mr. Leeser?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleishman?
E- yes, did I miss something?
Okay, we still haven't discussed, the last time I've tried to bring it up, I was, and I see it's down here, but I still want to go over this time clock.
Okay.
Policy, and until I got the answer, I'll, I'll vote no every time on payroll.
Okay. If I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I wanted to find out. I mean, is this a good time to discuss it? Because, you know, I'm, I'm relying on the board when I'm voting.
Yeah. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're on the time, uh, that we're all on the time clock. Uh, all employees are on time clock.
Uh, all employees are on time clocks.
Okay.
And time clock policy is being enforced.
Okay.
In the right manner.
Okay.
So.
Is there someone that is not, or is there something?
I don't know until we have a discussion about it, John, I don't know.
Okay, okay, I, I.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
You're, sir, you're, you're not.
I'm trying to say to you as the person that holds the question to the key sits beside you.
Okay.
So ask him the question.
Well, these, these payrolls here are before.
I, I, I understand, okay.
Okay, okay, so yeah, I am a yes, so. I, sir, uh, Mr. Blevins, you know, I was, if I came across wrong, I apologize. I wish, because if I'm missing something and I hear that and it, it got my attention, um, I thought, man, what did I miss? Because I rely on everybody to, this is the time that we share. And if I'm voting yes on something and I don't realize that I'm missing something, it caught my ear real quick.
All right, this way forward.
Uh, I don't know how, since Lindsay's here, she may be able to take the ball on this. There's a discussion regarding creating appropriation accounts for the non-road department work.
Yes, so like the state auditors had suggested, we need to start paying them, um, out of the general fund when they do brush pickup, house, uh, and house bill fifty, anything, so we just need the approval from you guys to make the accounts to.
Did you follow, I remember this.
Yeah, I remember the discussion, I remember, but do we have, do we need a resolution, do we need a?
Being that it were expenditure.
Spending money, I'd say we need to write up a resolution on it and, and yeah, let's just go ahead and do it and get it on the books for next time and.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all we need so that we can.
It's some more of that, it's some more of that, that, that housekeeping stuff we, we were going to continue to have going on probably until the end of time, but let's hope not.
You will.
I, 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 I'm, I'm looking for that light that's into the tunnel that's not there yet. Anything, it was, I guess moving on to you now, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question for fiscal, is it on my ass?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So I've put in a record request for the MOUs.
Yes.
And here's the thing, I have had the MOUs in the past, so I don't want to hear that they're not public record because they are public record. I've got them in the past and I've asked them, and I'd, I'd like to know, I want you to tell me why.
I do not believe that I have updated copies for a couple of the MOUs and I'm just waiting to do those.
And that's scary that the fiscal office doesn't have copies of the up-to-date MOUs.
I understand.
And when we get things sent to us, that reference, MOUs, I don't know how I'm supposed to do my due diligence if I can't get them.
I understand.
So I guess I'll ask Mr. Mazer.
Ask me.
Number one, does the fiscal office have your up-to-date MOU?
All the up-to-date MOUs are attached to resolutions that were approved by the trustees.
So you have to have all the resolutions?
I would have all the resolutions, we were just verifying that we have all the up-to-date ones before we gave them to you.
Okay. My question is why are you doing a record request? You're a trustee, you're a trustee.
There seems to be a bona fide about me getting these, sir.
You're a trustee, you have, there was.
You don't have the right to just get it.
You're a trustee, you do not have to do a records request. You're a trustee, you, you, you just go to that department and ask for it.
I, I hear you three, but, okay, I, I want the MOUs as soon as possible, okay?
There you go. Because Mike, you don't have to, I mean, you're, you are a bona fide trustee.
You don't have to, and he don't have to, but on everything, they make me jump through hoops.
Okay.
And I've talked to you guys about this repeatedly.
So how can we help you so that that's?
Well, I'm going to start calling it out like I just did.
Okay.
Well, the fiscal department has all the MOUs because they're attached to resolutions.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that we have all the updated ones before we gave them to him.
They wouldn't be in, in a resolution if they're not updated.
I was just making sure with Robin.
And now we're moving forward.
Okay, the first resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash zero two three, obligations approved by the township administrator. Whereas Board of Township Trustees in Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirty, authorize the township administrator to approve and cura obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the Ohio Revised Code. Uh, again, the period is from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four through March fifth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved as the resolution is written, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
All right, whenever you are ready, Mr. Major.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
The next thing I have is injury leave for Officer Troy Hale. And it's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two four, approving eighty hours of injury leave for Officer Troy Hale, clear resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves eighty hours of injury leave for employee Troy Hale for the period of two twenty-five, twenty twenty-four through three nine, twenty twenty-four per Article twenty-four of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement.
So moved as the resolution is written, I was asking you if, um, all such touring requirements have been made, paperwork sent in?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
Whenever you're ready, sir, give us a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
The next thing, I just want to run by the board some, some updates that we need to make to the handbook, I think I've sent you some email changes. Nothing major, it's just one simple thing where in, in the handbook, it addresses the, uh, ethics. Uh, and it should actually refer to page, uh, thirteen, not page three. And then it addresses force accounts, which was just passed by the, um, state legislation, which increases forced accounts from fifteen thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand. And, um, construction contract bidding, required bidding for forty-five thousand to a hundred and five thousand dollars. But again, that was just passed by the legislation here recently. The next item is, um, as Mr. Blevins spoke, that we have time clocks now. Um, I had set some updates to the policy that, you know, you can review. Teamsters contract says three minutes either way, three minutes before, three minutes after we clock in. And, uh, Chief, help me with police contract.
Five before, five after.
Five before, five after. So, um, I guess my thinking is in the handbook, it should just include, police have their contract, five minutes. I can just update the, the handbook to say three minutes, which corresponds to the teamsters.
Or, 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 you know, we, we could just make five minutes.
And just, I mean. But if we do that, sir, then when we're talking different teamsters versus et cetera, if we start, uh, one thing I noticed when we do, um, any type of work with the union, they start saying past practices, well, you allow this past practice. So what we should do is stick to what the contract is, even though it's three minutes, if they want to negotiate that in the next contract, so be it. But if we do something outside, even though we're trying to give them a freebie of five minutes or equit, then it comes against us.
No, I, I understand what, exactly what you're saying and.
Because I run into that all the time and then we say, well, the past practice, you did this. Well, we were being nice.
I, I would just put a stipulation in there, I mean.
We stick to the contract.
Stick to the contract, yeah. Yeah. And we can, I, I've, I've read all this and I'm good with, uh, I'm making a motion today that we, um, implement all these into the handbook if, if the other two trustees are.
I have discussions, so.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we, we put into the employee handbook, the revisions that were sent out and that we had read and the revision to the time clock, including what we have discussed here today, to add, um, to abide by the contract of each department.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I do. So I read those advisories and things that were sent to me and it's about as clear as mud. So I'm just going to fire off some questions and you can give me answers, is that going to work for you?
Yeah.
So the administrative staff punches in when they get to work?
Sure.
They punch out for lunch?
Sure.
They leave the building for an emergency or any reason, they punch out.
When you say they, they leave the grounds?
Okay, they have to go, let's just say they have an emergency and they have to leave. They punch out.
Absolutely.
When they come back, they punch in.
Absolutely.
All employees and, uh, uh, clerical and administrative.
Are you saying my administrative staff?
Yes.
Yes. They leave the grounds, they, they clock out.
Okay.
Unless they're on contract business.
Right.
Okay. Okay, but you, and you approve that, you're not trying to run your department, I just want to make sure that these things are on, run effectively the same way. Tired of hearing that Lindsey runs her department and.
It is her department.
And I understand that, but Lindsey's allowed to say that someone doesn't have to punch out for lunch, according to the lawyers. Okay, whether you believe that or not, it's true.
That is what they said.
There is it, I can prove it to you. She has the right to approve for her employee not to take lunch, it's her department.
Can I, can I say something?
You don't say it.
I was going back through some other information. This is from Doug Ferguson, that was a letter that came to me, and this is a senior auditor manager, um, for Franklin County for the state. And Mr. Ferguson, um, had stated this question had been asked, and I'll make copies if you guys would like this. It says, please remember, there is a, uh, motion that has been placed, no, uh, no more overtime without prior approval of the majority of the board. So the board itself, and when it goes through that, the board has the right of employees as far as timekeeping and et cetera, so I don't know. I don't know what, um, the reason that I had this, I was going to speak on this when I get up, um, the reason that I had this, I wanted to trust the board to let them know I'm the only board member that was here and what's important about this is there, and I'll come up with it eventually, I'm going through some of my past stuff. When we're talking about working through lunches is why I said that. It was brought up and said no for that employee, meaning Robin could not work through lunch. And this went to, uh, Doug Ferguson and there was a resolution, um, and I'm going to get the resolution that we made. But this letter was dated, um, April sixteenth of twenty eighteen. So I just wanted the board to know that, and then you responded, responded when you said about clocking out for lunch. I have no idea about clocking out for lunch.
And my whole goal of doing this is to not repeat what's happened in the past.
I understand.
I, I think, I think we, we need to check with the labor.
And.
I think it's a labor issue, i- if you're going, you have to have a lunch break if you work an eight-hour day.
And that's what this spawned way back when. But, and then two.
But if she's not working, hang on, John, if she's not working an eight-hour day, if she's only going to work a six-hour day, then you can wait, yeah.
So, so by your rule, you cannot ask someone in an emergency situation to work through their lunch.
No, you can't.
Get something done.
No, you can't.
And that was discussed when the other two board members were on and I got.
That's mine, go ahead.
And I've got to get that information as I go back through my stuff. But, uh, Mr. Blevins, I'm, I don't know for sure, but you may want to accuse, is it called accuse yourself from these conversations because of your relationship with Robin and that two of you live together, this might be something that could get you in, um, hot water.
Yeah.
Could be an ethics issue.
Yeah.
I don't know that we, uh, discussed anything that was, that I needed to recuse myself from.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Where did we, where did we discuss something?
Well, we're voting on time clocks, that is going to be for all employees. And the only reason that I'm saying this is because, um, the article that was, you know, people have read the article in the paper and that Robins, um, that what came down, that she has to pay back X amount of money because she worked overtime and, um, worked through her lunch. And then we're voting right now on time clocks and you're voting, the last time you voted no.
The time clocks have already been voted on.
I understand, but that's what I'm talking about.
And we're, we're voting on the policy.
And now we're voting on the policy, I would think, maybe I'm totally wrong, I may be wrong.
I voted no on time clocks?
Yeah, the last meeting, you voted no when, when it came to the time clocks, on that resolution.
I voted no on payroll the last time and I voted no on the payroll today.
Sure, so what I'm saying is when it affects the fiscal department and it has any affection, not affection, effect on Robin, then, and we had a discussion here just now about Robin being able to work through her and that Lindsey could do what she wants, that's where it could get you in ethics.
I think that's why I brought the question up, I wanted to know, does Lindsey have the ability?
Maybe I stated it wrong. I don't know, I'm not accusing you, I'm just wanting you to be careful.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I don't know.
It could be, it could be.
We, we need to check with, with someone, I, I don't want to accuse anyone, I don't want to make any accusations, it's just like, um.
Just kind of looking out.
Right, looking out for each other.
I, I could see, I'd, I'd be a good thing to call the ethics board and ask.
Okay.
If you can, if you should discuss on it, but I, I would say as far as clocking in and out for lunch, uh, it, it. Everything I've seen from the labor, labor standpoint, labor board, um, if you work an eight-hour day, there's exceptions of nurses, firefighters and, um, well, basically first responders.
It's, it's being done now and there's no problem, I just want to make sure that we're all doing it the same way.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
But I see what you're saying, if it's not a full eight-hour day, you wouldn't necessarily have to take the lunch.
Right, but if it's an eight-hour day, there has to be a lunch break in there, along with two fifteen-minute breaks.
I don't know if it's been two minutes breaks or happening across the.
Two fifteen-minute breaks are, are, are mandatory, and they're not, they're, they're paid breaks.
Right.
Lunches are not paid, but yeah.
Okay, so err on the caution of not being in any kind of trouble when you vote for the time clocks, I will recuse myself, how's that?
You know, I mean, I mean, what you might want to do is just check with ethics to see, it, it's not like.
I don't, I don't want to hold it up.
Oh, I don't either.
You're making, you're making more out of it than what it is, I just want to make sure that we're not going to repeat the same problem again with.
Well, I think this policy takes care of that.
Okay, so I'm lost where we are, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor to implement it, we've had a discussion now, I'm looking for a second.
Okay, I will second.
When you're ready, let's do a vote.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Blevins?
So I'm recusing myself.
I'm staying.
I'm staying, there you go.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
Truck went by and blinded me.
The next thing I'd just like to bring the board's attention, as you know, we've, we've been working closely with Franklin County Public Health. And we have an opportunity, and again, I'll repeat it, AARP grants, not A R P A. We have an opportunity to get a grant, um, to work with the community garden in Janine to construct a sidewalk around her, around her, um, her community garden near, near Havenwood. So I want to let the board know that we're in the process, fingers crossed, to get this grant. And, um, we can put these sidewalks in, which would be a nice addition for Janine, she's thrilled that we're doing this and she's got big plans for her garden coming up this season.
That'd be great.
If we can do it, let's help.
They always do a really good job over there, and if any of you guys had a chance to see that, I can remember when they first started with that. And, um, with the different cultures, um, that are there, some of the different foods that they grow is, is really, um, interesting.
I, I, I've been bothering it, it looks amazing, but that reminded me of another question I have.
Then the next thing I have is a liquor license for a company called Mogo Fourteen, located at four oh three Georgiasville Road. I haven't heard any complaints regarding this establishment, Chief, have you, does it sound familiar?
Yes, um, they've sent the request for the background checks, we've done them, sent them back, they're fine.
Terrific, thank you. Can I get this to Lindsey for her, for her signature?
Okay.
And then one to bring to the board's attention, we have these old antiquated COVID policies.
Yes, sir.
I just sat in a meeting with Joe Lozola and other administrators. Joe Lozola is the director of Franklin County Public Health. He agreed that all these, all these old COVID policies we have, we don't need. There's probably six or seven of them. What I'd like to do with the board is bring a resolution to you to the next meeting, rescinding, rescinding them all.
My opinion, let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that at this point we suspend all COVID resolutions until further notice. And then we will be able to come back with new policies.
I would second, I, I'll ask for a discussion on that. Hearing none, I, I will second that. That we make, that we suspend all COVID policies.
Yes.
Yeah, John's motion.
I am John today.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Leiser?
Absolutely.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
I think we, I think we know our stand, I think we know where I stand on that.
One last thing, I promise. Just wanted to, and, and I had some correspondence with Julie with our law firm this morning. Just wanted to know if the board had the chance to discuss in detail your position with Alu. Before you start, I have sent a letter off to Franklin County Economic Development and Planning and the county commissioners that you trustees had a discussion and you were not in a position to commit one way or the other. It's like, there's, there's room there for continued discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
I would ask that we would take this into an executive session based upon numbers and fact finding that I and Steve have received in regards to a township-wide levy if we so deem to move forward with it.
I was, I was going to ask to table this because I, I need to look more into it anyhow. And maybe we can discuss it when we have our next executive session. Next week, whenever you schedule that, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think. That's it, John, thank you.
All right. Mr. Fleishman, you have anything for us?
I don't, I already, thank you, Mike, for allowing me to speak on you stuff on that.
Because it went together.
We try to work together.
Yeah, so that, that's all I had was that.
The only thing I have, and I won't bore everyone with it, I would like to, Chief, can I see you afterwards? I need to ask you a question about a block lot, that's it. Real quick, when we talked about cameras, John, you'd asked me.
Yes, sir.
You guys asked me to look into it and take care of it. We brought back some quotes for anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars for camera. And so I wanted to try this meeting here and we're doing it on a cell phone.
Yes.
I want to just see how it works because when I did my investigation and looked at other townships, they, we do not need to spend taxpayers' money to do this. It's just to get the word out.
Sure.
So what we would do is when this is over, fiscal would take over because it's part of the record. Fiscal will give it to administrator and she will post it on YouTube, the same as she posted. Audio, we're going to use the same policy. If you don't like it, doesn't work, we can always come back and discuss, but I just wanted to give it a try.
So the only thing that I would ask just bit from being through some of the conferences, whatever device that we use would need to be a township.
And it is, and it is. It's one hundred percent a township phone.
And then the other thing that I may say, if it looks good, et cetera. I don't know which phone it is with. It's a five, seven, or ten. If we like what we see, we may want to get another device that does the same thing with the, the upper quality because as you go from, what's the latest one? So on those, the, it goes to four K, is that correct? So with, with the audio boost as well, correct? So some of them, if we have problems with the audio boost and if we have problem with like lighting, et cetera, and we think that there's no sense in going and spending, like you said, we may just upgrade one of our phones so that it would have that capability because in the future, sir, you're absolutely correct, the expensive things here, that can do just as well.
And I'm, I guess I'm sitting here looking at like, I just wanted, I just wanted to give it a try.
Oh, that was smart. I, I, that was smart, so.
There you go. That's all I have. All right, meeting's adjourned.